I'd like to call the Town of Waltham, you're planning more meeting to order. Could we all rise for a pledge of the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the Secretary perform a roll call attendance, please. President? Here.
Mr. Martin Matthew?
Here.
Mr. Artecas?
Here.
Mr. Frino?
Here.
Here. Okay. All the board members have received the minutes from the Secretary from December the eighth. It's just supposed to be December seventh. Okay.
I'll make a motion, accept the minutes, and second.
Okay. So, motion's made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening is the Smith three lot subdivision. If we have the engineer come on up and...
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd just like to ask you to take the drawing, just so it can be picked up by the camera. Just turn it a little bit. That's... yeah, I believe that should be okay.
All right, so my name is Andrew Bolson, I'm with Lawrence Proggy's office. And this is our client, Pam Ron Smith, at three Los Cibos. Looking to do a three lot subdivision on just under four acre parcel, on the corner of Los Cibos and Otofo Road. We're proposing connecting into existing sewer district and onsite water. So, the locations of the building, the size of the building, is based on client request. She's actually given these to her children. So, that is the purpose of the strategies and locations. We did see some of the comments from the Dutch County Health Department regarding water, which we would like to discuss with you guys. But other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward. Do you have any comments or questions?
I know we do have a couple of questions regarding lot one. Apparently, the one structure is listed as a carriage house.
That's correct.
Is that an occupied structure, is it?
So, our understanding is that it's a garage with an apartment above it.
Okay.
Just a one bedroom apartment, I believe, so... or maybe just a stereo apartment. But our understanding is that it can't be occupied, yes?
So, that's occupied now?
I believe so.
Okay.
Not positive on that.
All right. Okay, I mean, that's going to raise some concerns, because I believe the assessor's office has this property as a... one family with, you know, a couple of accessory structures on it.
Right.
You know, more for storage and, I believe, a hobby room was the other use for the... in the carriage house, in a garage.
Okay.
So, an apartment's going to pose to be a little bit of an issue now.
Okay.
That they'll need to resolve with the zoning administrator.
Okay.
Okay.
Was that when it was sold back in, I believe, something like 2015? That's how they had it?
That's when they put it in?
I believe that's when it was sold.
Did they buy it with the apartment?
I would have to ask the client, but I don't... Yeah, I think I have to ask the client.
So, in 2000, it was... a hobby studio was created and not to be used for habitable space.
Okay.
So, somebody illegally put an apartment in it at some time after 2000.
Okay. All right, yeah. We can address that.
And then, one of the other questions, too, is the lots two and three, the sizes of the houses. What's the thought process behind the two different sizes?
So, we actually met the whole family out on site, and it was just based on the information that the client gave to us. I guess one of her children wants the larger... this larger building on lot three, and her other child wants this smaller building out. I mean, I'm not really sure what their motivation was, but that was just what they asked for. So, we were trying to reflect that in our plans.
Okay, so, it's all... well, the whole subdivision is basically for all family members, so it's not like it's being sold off to...
Correct.
Just, you know, an individual to build.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Because normally, in cases with the... with the different setbacks, usually we ask for some form of screening. So, let's say, you know, something between the rear of the house on lot three to the front of the house on lot two. Usually, something in there, because, I mean, if you have, you know, the people trying to enjoy their backyard.
Right.
In lot three, you know, the people are accessing, you know, in and out of the front of their house on lot two. You know, they're basically staring, so the backyards are kind of... you know, the back and front yard is open to one another.
That makes sense, yeah.
There's something that might want to be addressed.
Okay, true.
Let me go through the rest of the... when we start with the engineer, I guess we'll go through some of his comments.
Sure. So, we already talked about the carriage house. So, depending on how this works out with the apartment, if the apartment has to go away, then would you still need to have the sewer connection there?
No, I don't think so.
So, all right, so we'll see, we'll see how that goes. I guess the only other real comment that we have, we had a couple of small ones about, you're going to have to get together with the highway superintendent on the driveways.
Right.
We have to get together, you know, with KMO, the authority, and the details for the sewer connection. And then, the other one was, it looks like there's kind of a natural drainage path that goes down from lot two right towards the house on lot three. So, I'd just like you to look at that and to see if there's anything that needs to be done. You know, we suggested maybe taking the roof levers for the houses and putting them into an infiltration, you know, like trench system, you know, to cut down on the water. You know, you may want to do some regrading on lot three so that that kind of natural drainage path is directed around the house.
Yes.
You know, it's minor, but... And that was pretty much it for us.
Yeah. We liked the idea of the infiltration trenches, so we're moving that in our next submission.
And then, there's also going to be some sewer buy-in fees. It's in the, you know, parcels already within the United Waltham Sewer District. So, we just brought up that there's some buy-in fees, which are going to have to be taken care of. But I guess that could be made a condition of the approval, so... I guess there... wait a second, there's also a question, I guess that could be decided, like, later. I mean, as far as whether it's going to be a three or a four bedroom house, because that'll obviously, you know, affect the sewer buy-in fees.
I think right now, they're both proposed to be three bedrooms. And then, the existing house is a four bedroom. So, that's my understanding of the plan.
We may just want to, you know, to note that on the maps, what the houses are as far as, you know, the bedroom count, as far as the sewer fees go. That was it.
Okay. Will we run through the planner's letter? Do you have any items you want to touch on?
Well, we discussed the differences in the proposed building sizes and the setbacks, and really, we were curious whether or not that was by design at request or merely hypothetical. So, you've cleared that out. My only other question, which I'm inferring the answer, was about future subdivision, because both of the lots are set up to accommodate future subdivision in the future, but it doesn't sound like that's a part of your plan.
Yeah, that is not in the plan. That was fine.
Okay. That being said, I mean, it would still be available to future owners, should they choose to sell those lots off in the future. So, that would be something to keep in mind.
Okay.
I just picked up, I just picked up one more item. On the new property lines between lots two and three and one and two, there's no bearing in distance on the line. There's a... I'm sorry, like, distance. There's no bearing on the line. There's a distance. Everything else has bearings and distances on it. So, if you could just jot that down, that we need to get a bearing on those new lot lines.
Would that not be something for the surveyors?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicants?
I think we have anything on the soul exception site business still on the table, or not?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's not up to us to have to do that. I mean, it's up to the, you know, to the building department. I think before you come back to this board again, I think we need to resolve the carriage house issue. You know, and the applicant should get a inspection from the building department to verify what's actually on the site. That way, is, you know, if they have something they can... they need to address, they probably should get it done sooner than later.
What are we doing as far as secret goes? I see that you're saying that the proposed action is considered an unlisted action. Are we going to do an uncoordinated review or coordinated or...
So, we don't, we don't need to circulate our intention to be lead agency. I've worked with applicants who choose to anyway, but, yeah.
I mean, really, the only other approval agency is the Health Department, it's just, you know, for water supply and it's...
Potentially, the town board will got sewer?
They're already in the water district, so I think it's just a matter of paying, you know, their fees and such, so...
They would have to...
Yeah, I didn't see...
Uncoord... yeah, that's fine, okay.
An issue with an uncoordinated...
So, there's really no, there's no need for a coordinated review.
So, we don't need to do anything this far, okay, cool.
Okay. I mean, the only thing was, I guess, we'd have to... With the outstanding issue, I mean, the only other thing would be is to schedule a public hearing. That's going to be the... Do we want to, do we want to schedule a public hearing?
Not till the issues are...
Until, right. Or do we want to give them the opportunity to... we could schedule it for a point in the future. Hopefully, they get it done in between. If we hold a public hearing, we don't have to close it either if it's not been resolved. We could throw that round.
If you schedule it for the first meeting in February, we still have two weeks in the office to work out something with the applicant and the engineer. If it can't be resolved, then you can do in your motion that the public hearing will not take place, and we won't circulate for it. They'll have to come back with that issue...
Right.
...to deal with it first. Can they do something like that?
And we still have one, just one meeting in February, correct? Okay. I mean, we could always, yeah, I mean, the worst case is we would just remove it from the agenda if we don't have resolution. So, do you think you'd be able to get all these, you know, all the few items that need to be addressed and get that submitted in a timely manner? Have the applicant schedule with the building department to inspect the site? So, if we get that done, I guess at this point, we could go with... well, if the board's inclined, we could set a public hearing for what would be the...
February first?
It'd be February first? Okay, so, leave it up to if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion made, second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And that would be with the caveat that if everything's not in order prior to, you know, prior to the date, then we will, you know, we will remove it from the agenda. You know, probably, you know, within three days prior to the meeting.
Well, can we just, in the next two weeks, if there can't be a resolution with the owners, then why even circulate and notify all the neighbors? I'd rather see them back on February first as a discussion to deal... to see what they're going to do with this.
So, let's make it for March. Is that too far?
No, I think in two weeks, you, your clients, we can get to some sort of...
Yeah, we'll be in touch with them tomorrow.
...decision or impasse. If there's an impasse, then I think we should just not do the public hearing and have them back as a discussion and hear their side of it. Or if they, the resolution is that they're willing to, for example, get rid of it, turn it back into storage, then we can move ahead with the public hearing. What do you think?
Can we put a date on when we need to hear from them?
Two weeks. Two weeks.
One...
January twentieth. That's the next, that's the next planning board meeting.
All right, so February... so, so January twentieth, they would have to submit, they would have to have this resolved.
Right.
That gives you enough time to publish for the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, we're going to get to amend the motion that they must... That we have to, they have to have all the information in by January the twentieth in order to publish for the public hearing on February first.
I'll amend the motion.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. Motion made, second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, with that, I don't know if you have any other questions for the board or the professionals?
Um, you know, not that I have off the top of my head right now, so...
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right, no, thank you. Okay, so our next item on the agenda this evening is Global Business Park Subdivision and Central Duchess Industrial Center Site Plan.
I read the comments, I didn't see... Did they specify what elements of the submission, or? Maybe it's just this that they're talking about.
You mentioned that we have to recent man.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Bill Polvow, and he's the applicant with Global Saddle Lane.
Okay.
We're here tonight with a subdivision application and a site plan application for a hundred and fifteen acre parcel located at the end of Airport Drive. This is actually the site I was in, I think, two months ago to discuss a different project, on a different part of the...
On the, on the south parcel.
Right. Since that meeting, there was initially someone interested to work with us on that project, and that no longer is on the table, so that project's just taken off the plate for a minute. So, that brings us to the application we have before you tonight. As you know, this is a hundred and fifteen acres at the end of Airport Drive. Right now, here's the existing cul-de-sac. And what we're proposing is a commercial development. We have four buildings, or renting out to such businesses like contractors, and I'll get into that further as I speak. That would be on lot one, which is this triangle piece here. In order to do that, we need to extend Airport Drive. And based on the discussions prior to the meeting, I'll get into that a little bit now. Airport Drive was a subdivision that was approved back in the late eighties. And the reason why the road was built to where it is is for the large warehouse property on the end. At the time, I believe it was Run Ubers built that building, and they were the first ones to develop. So, the road was all the way to that point from the get-go. With the initial subdivision was approved, there was also a right-of-way to continue with the cul-de-sac into this property, which is across the stream. The stream is encompassed by DTC wetlands. So, the... initially, the cul-de-sac was just built to the stream, and it wasn't carried over, because it was a big project at the time for this property. And as you can see, the existing cul-de-sac is offset, because the intention was always to bring the road into this property. In fact, there was a right-of-way that was created for the road. Airport Drive is a commercial road. It's fifty percent wider than the standard twenty-four foot road. It's thirty-six feet wide. That's the town commercial roads back. And that's two twelve-foot lanes and a six-foot pavement shoulder. So, this road has a lot of width to it, which gives more room to pass by than if something occurs on the road. So, again, with that in mind, and to accommodate the project, we're now ready to extend the road over the stream into the buildable areas. Approximately forty acres out of a hundred and fifteen acres on this property that are high and dry outside of any wetlands and flood plain and environmental, you know, environmental sensitive areas. In 2004, there was a subdivision application submitted to this board. Did reach a point where the board conditionally approved it, you know, they approved the resolution to extend the road. And the reason why that was never continued is the owner ran into a roadblock with DTC, because at the time, there wasn't a specific plan, site plan, for the property. The intention at the time was to provide access to the buildable area so that people would be interested to build. Because that's been kind of a catch point, too, with this property, is there's been a lot of interest, but the access isn't in place. So, that's where DTC got involved and said they wanted to see the project before they would go ahead and issue any kind of stream disturbance permit, well, undisturbance permit. So, that carried on through about 2009, when that project was, you know, was abandoned because there was no user in the back. So, that brings us to now. We are proposing a site plan that the owner's going to build. Anyone who knows the owner, they have multiple commercial properties, and the proposed buildings are in line with their type of development.
Okay.
So, with that being said, at this point in time, we'd be creating approximately a nineteen oh six acre lot from the hundred and fifteen acres to build a site plan that would comply with the airport industry zone. And the road, as proposed within the subdivision, which would be dedicated, you know, be proposed to be dedicated to the town, and could be just an extension of Airport Drive, provides the necessary frontage, and it provides access for not only this lot one, but the balance of the property. There's a... it's approximately four hundred feet of frontage that's provided for the balance of the property for future development. That's outside any DTC wetland or buffer or environmental strain. So, this particular plan is actually the road design plan for the extension. The stream is in this area here, and this area is wetland. There would be a large culvert that would be constructed for the road. The design of that culvert would be similar to what we did in oh seven. We are going to update the design calculations and so forth, just to bring that all up to date as part of the next submission. However, we just wanted to get it before the board this time, before we get too far into the real details of this plan. The road's approximately six hundred and fifty feet to get past the wetlands, the wetland buffer, and provide proper access to the balance of the property. There will be significant, you know, significant fill that will be required to extend this road across the wetland area into the property. And that's shown with the grading that we proposed there. We do have some drainage shown, we just didn't get into the real detail of the piping and so forth, because that's something engineering-wise, that's not going to be an issue as far as the water. But we did want to show the board the grading, the fill that would be needed to do this. And then, as part of building this road, we're going to need to get a DTC disturbance permit. We're going to have to get an Army Corps, get approval from Army Corps. And we're going to need a stream disturbance permit from DTC. So, we do understand and know that those are permits that we're going to need in order to build this road. So, the new driveway would come off this cul-de-sac up in here, and then this would all be good, unpeated frontage.
Frontage for the other lot.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the plan is so... that also ties the site plan into this before I change the drawings, but the overall site planning for the commercial development that we're proposing is designed to create excess fill that will be used to build the road. So, overall, the earthwork's going to be balanced between the site plan and building the road. It's all going to stay onsite.
Wait. You're saying that the construction of the site plan would create the fill for the construction of the road?
Right now, we graded out the site plan long enough to create the fill that we would need to build the road.
Wouldn't you need to build the road before you could get back there, though?
Right, well, you're going to have to, in order to build the road, you're going to have to get back there anyway to start, to start getting the fill, and you work from the back forward.
Right, very, right. Once you get in there, you're roughing a path to the site. You're going to work with the material that's onsite to build, to bring it out. to build, to bring it out to build the road, so it's almost you're building a road and the, and the site plan simultaneously.
Right, so they're gonna go hand in hand.
So you think we've got a proposed design to cross the stream?
Yes, we're gonna cross the stream, we're gonna propose a culvert that's gonna be all the...
I mean, just to get back there to do, we're taking the, build a pontoon bridge or something?
You probably got to build like a temporary...
We'll have to have a temporary bridge and we do, we may have some, we may have the ability for access from another property, uh, for temporary, you know, temporary...
But you'll let us know that?
Yes, for sure.
Now, you heard our comments before about how wide were you gonna make that road?
Well, the road's gonna be thirty-six feet wide and that meets the commercial, the town has a commercial road standard. So the pavement's actually thirty-six feet wide. There's two twelve-foot lanes and then there's a six-foot paved shoulder. So overall, it's fifty percent larger than a standard subdivision road, which is twenty-four feet. So there's a lot of width. If you ever go out there, uh, it's pretty wide open.
Just, the one question I have is the, um, regarding the cul-de-sac at the end, is that the same size as the cul-de-sac that's currently there?
Yes.
So you're just replacing it at the, at the end of the road? Okay.
We would build a cul-de-sac, you know, to the town spec.
Yeah.
I know there was a comment, that'll come up later, I believe in Peter's letter, um, but unless we had the wrong cul-de-sac, um, detail, uh, the intention of this was to design it to the town's code, so if we do need to expand it, we can.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wasn't sure, um, you know, for some reason, when they subdivided originally, they put that cul-de-sac. I don't know if the board at the time had some, some thought in mind where that needed to be larger because it's gonna handle, um, you know, a lot, a lot more commercial vehicles than you would in a normal residential subdivision where you'd put one of those in and it's usually, uh, I wanna say it's like ninety-eight foot diameter cul-de-sac. I can't remember what the, the town spec is, but whatever it is, I, I didn't know if there was any difference, but if you were mirroring to what was currently there and just putting it to the back, um, but that's all I was looking to say.
You know, for us, we can work with the town and create any size cul-de-sac. I mean, it could even be a hammerhead design, you know, for plowing purposes, a lot of towns like that.
Yeah, we'll have to go meet with Mike Sheehan and, you know, as we, as we develop, you know, the road details and the bridge and...
I mean, yeah, I mean, uh, feedback from, from the highway superintendent would, would be good on this.
And, and another thing to keep in mind, these are commercial, um, facilities, so they're open to the public, so...
Right.
You know, if there was a situation where you had a special condition, it would be the ability to turn around. But again, we work with the town, um, and this board, um, to provide whatever size is needed.
Okay.
And lastly with this, you can see we did a profile. Uh, the maximum grade we have shown is six and a half percent. Uh, we didn't want to go over seven because of the commercial vehicles.
Yeah.
So this is the, this is the site plan, so looking at the subdivision plan. It's in this area here. So again, you have the large warehouse building here, you have a vacant parcel up here. This would be the land that would be left over with the subdivision, and then this is the rail trail.
Yeah.
So this is the layout plan. Uh, we're proposing, uh, twenty-four foot wide driveway coming in for two-way traffic for commercial. We have four buildings, building one, which is ten thousand seven hundred and forty-four square feet, building two, which is eight thousand five hundred and sixty-eight, and then building three and four, the same size at five thousand feet forty-eight. So with this plan, it was designed to provide good access to the buildings, uh, being that it would be for contractors. We're not planning this for any tractor trailers, although if a tractor trailer did come in, there's plenty of ways to maneuver. But specifically around the buildings, we have a parking lot, uh, which would be essentially the front of each building, which would provide offices, uh, small offices, and then on the other side of each of the building, we have, um, garages or storage areas for contractors to store their materials, um, you know, provide storage and so forth. We also, with this plan, are providing additional parking than what's needed because typically with the contractor, uh, they have extra vehicles, you know, like an electrician might have three or four vehicles because he only works on off-site, as the board is aware, or a landscaper, you know, might have a trailer. What we are proposing in this back area is some larger, longer spaces, so for example, if you had a one moment contractor with a closed trailer, it'd be able to back in in this area here. So we are providing some extra parking, um, speaking to a lot of people, I mean, or a lot of contractors. It's typically one of the restrictions when they try and rent anywhere, they don't have any place to park because they have one or two spots for their, for their vehicles. We're not proposing any parking for any, um, excavators or heavy, uh, heavy equipment. The entire area is proposed to be paved. It's for road registered vehicles. I know there was a comment about hazardous waste, hazardous material storage. Uh, there's none of that's proposed. But this plan, um, let me go with the grading plan. So this, this is the layout plan, and then the last plan shows the grading plan. Again, with this, with this particular grading here, this balances, uh, creates the, the excess material that's needed to build the road. With this layout, we did have to come in because of the topography, uh, to create an appropriate grade, so we came along the front here. It hasn't been designed yet, but as you can see, we have quite a large area, we reserve in the back, and we have an area in the front to accommodate the requirements. Again, we'll get into that, um, in, in, as we move forward.
Okay.
We just hope to be doing that, uh, when we leave here tonight. So with this particular plan, grading again, um, creates fill needed for the road. We did reserve a minimum, in a lot of places, it's thirty, forty feet, but we did leave a minimum of twenty-five feet of the existing vegetation from where we're disturbing to the property line and the rail trail.
Okay.
So the rail trail itself is almost fifty feet or more from a lot of the actual, uh, proposed tree line and the disturbances. So there's still gonna be an existing vegetated buffer to where we're proposing to grade. And then from there, we do have grassed area. We're showing a swell, we're showing some trees to further enhance, uh, the buffer and to the parking lot. And the buildings themselves are, um, they're, uh, this building in the back, building four is over four hundred feet.
And on the, on the next submission, could there, can we get elevations for the buildings, so we know exactly, you know, how high?
Sure.
You know, what they're gonna look like, front and rear, you know, so they have an idea of, you know, the overall, what the, what it's gonna look like.
There's a couple houses right on the inside of the rail trail, too, I think.
Back here.
Yes.
Now, what you, what you have, um, which this grading shows is you have thirty-plus feet of a berm between the existing grade, um, where the edge of the parking lot is to the rail trail. So there's that natural buffer, so this...
So, okay, so it's gonna, that all slopes up thirty feet?
Isn't this, isn't this property quite, quite a bit higher, though, than the rail trail?
Actually, what we're proposing is gonna be lower than the rail trail. The, the property itself does go up from the rail trail.
Because I think of those, uh, like steps that they have from the rail trail going up to where...
Those steps are right here.
Okay.
Uh, and that's part of the, uh, the owner worked, uh, they worked with the Dutchess County for a waste management, provided, you know... It's part of that agreement, uh...
So you're taking this site down?
We're taking the site down in front of the berm, so this, this here?
Yeah.
This is elevation two forty and the top is two seventy. So this, this whole area is gonna be quite a distance below the rail trail with an existing berm and existing trees, so you're not gonna be able to see...
So if you're, right, so if you're on the rail trail, you're gonna be looking up the hill, you're not even gonna see the rooftops on these.
Where it does get close and grade is over in this area, and that's where we propose, uh, the parking, so there really is no building and there's a lot less movement back there.
Okay.
So we focus on keeping the buildings tucked in behind that existing berm or berm. And, you know, the, the grade that I selected here to set the pad not only was to create the fill for the road, but it also, I wanted to work with, uh, preserving the natural buffer to the rail trail, you know, keeping that berm and keeping the trees.
Yep, okay.
But yeah, the stairs, if you're on the rail trail, here's where the stairs are, and that's where the water main was brought out.
Okay, right, and it runs down Airport Drive.
Will you add trees if you need them on the upper section?
Yeah.
For, for the buffer?
Yep, we are showing some trees. We actually graded, uh, at the thirty-foot slope, we actually had room to grade in a ten-foot, ten-foot, uh, flat area halfway down the slope. So that'll help with drainage, erosion, and it also provides a nice bench for the trees.
You're gonna show us your list of trees?
Yes, to provide a planning schedule in the next submission, we'll give more detail. But as you can see, we are proposing quite a number of trees.
Did you see earlier, much earlier, that there was a right-of-way that allows you to do all of this?
So as part of the, as part of the subdivision plan, uh, the creators designed for the road, uh, there's a... I wanna say a hundred-foot right-of-way, but it could be sixty feet, I don't know if you can verify that. It was an existing right-of-way that was created on this one hundred and fifteen acre parcel that ran out towards the rail trail.
Oh, okay.
So if there was, at the time, they didn't know what they were gonna do with the rail trail, so if there was a road there, um, you'd be able to connect to it.
Is it, is it in use by anybody else now, the, the other part?
No, and that's something that would be extinguished, I believe, as part of the last subdivision that was approved.
Okay.
That was proposed to be extinguished because now the rail trail there, you know, you don't need to...
There's no, there's no, nobody, nobody's using that common area, okay.
And so again, we're gonna connect to the, the existing water main, and then we're showing septic in this area. Uh, where they use like this, the, uh, you know, the septic usage would be minimal. And we know we would have to work with, uh, the Dutchess County Health Department on that.
Yeah, okay.
And essentially, that's an overview of the project.
All right, that's, uh, gave us quite a bit of information, uh, through that, uh, through the overview. We should go through and, uh, touch base on, uh, on the letters from the, uh, we'll start with the engineer again.
Okay.
He had, he had a bunch of comments, I don't know, some of them probably have been answered.
Yeah, I'll breeze, I'll breeze through them. I just had a quick, quick question for you, Bill. Um, so, um, the buildings, the buildings are all, are all shown as, uh, smaller individual, spaces for contractors. You talked about like an office, and I can see that on, you know, the plan, office, and they had their little area in the back. So depending on who rents, who rents what, would they have to come in for like fit-up plans to the building department, like?
Typically.
You're gonna go, like, you know, your client's gonna build, uh, the shell, and then, and then you're not gonna go like divide already the inside of it because you don't know if somebody's gonna want a couple spaces and make it all one, right?
Correct. And this is something similar that I did the engineering on for, um, Need Landscaping. I did that. Um, I also did that for, um, Basely's building, uh, next to the, uh, next to, um, Need.
Yep.
So this is a similar idea. Uh, what this has, um, which we approved upon those plans, I believe, is the parking that I find these contractors need. It's essential.
So, uh, one of the reasons why I asked that was because I was wondering if there's some way through the building permit process for each individual space inside, you know, the shell, is there some way that we can keep track of, well, we're gonna know what that particular, like, business is, and is there some way to like document if there's gonna be any chemicals there or anything like that when they come in for a building permit?
Well, norm, I mean, normally, I'm not sure how they operate here, you know, in the building department here in town, but I know there's other towns that also will issue a shell permit. So they'll issue a shell permit for the actual shell of the building.
Right, right.
Um, once that's built out, they'll turn around and issue a certificate of compliance for the shell of the building.
Yep.
Each tenant that comes in would pull a subsequent...
Right.
Building permit to fit out the individual spaces. And at that time, usually they give details of what, you know, what's gonna be involved with that business. So if it's, you know, again, if you have a landscaper that goes in there and, you know, for some reason, he does, uh, you know, apply pesticides, you know, the building department could ask that question at that time and say, you know, um, you know, what are you keeping on-site?
Right.
And, you know, they can basically give them a list of, of information, uh, at that point and review it. I'm not sure if that's the way...
We do, because we have to see what sort of occupancy...
Okay, good, so we have a way of keeping track, then?
Right, and we've done that, like you said, with Need.
Okay.
The one thing that's always helpful, though, when you approve the plan, is that you include the uses that are allowable and whether or not, because we've run into this at Need, with outdoor storage with some companies, that we, in that particular one, there's no outdoor storage, and even in some of the others, not to name them, the tenants that are coming in now just start putting pallets outside...
Right, right, that's a good point.
So we need your, this board to be very clear, so that when a new customer comes in, and it may not be the first fit-up, it may be somebody ten years down the road, that the rules are in place for this site.
Right, and I was gonna mention that typically with something like this, you know, being involved in commercial rentals, it's, it's, it's just a moving out, you know, just people coming in, moving out, and so you're constantly, it's the building department that gets the plan.
Well, but if we have general, like, requirements on the plan that there's to be no outdoor, like, storage of, you know, whatever, I mean, I mean, what happens if like a landscape contractor, um, comes in, he's looking to have, you know, like bins for, you know, mulch or something like that, I mean...
You'd have to come back to the plan.
They'd have to come back to the plan if it was, if it was nicely...
But, but you set the parameters to start with, and then if somebody wants to go outside the box, they would have to come back in.
Right, so we should, so we should, so we should come up with a set of, uh, you know, regulations, I guess, if you will, or whatever.
Something like that would be if, if one business came in and rented multiple buildings, I could see something like that.
Right.
And that would make sense to come back to the planning board or something like that.
Right, so...
When you have multiple, you know, once you let one person do something, they all wanna do it, and then you have no problem.
Obviously, they're proposing, you know, this is what they're proposing with this generic, um, you know, this generic stance, but anything... Again, if there's no outdoor storage approved on the plan, they come back. But with talking about outdoor storage, it raised a question that just popped in my mind is, um, dumpster enclosures. Just so that, you know, there's confined spaces to, um, you know, to put dumpsters, because obviously, they're gonna be generating some type of, you know, garbage or recyclables and, you know, usually every, every, every site plan usually has, you know, shown on there where they're gonna put all those things. usually every, every, every site plan usually has, you know, shown on there where they're gonna put all those things.
Kind of does, that's in one of those details on our next go around.
Yeah.
Really just wanted to get the project before the board.
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand, I just-
To say, alright, this is good.
Yeah, I don't remember when I was reading the letters, I don't remember if that was mentioned in there, that's why I just wanted to bring that up at this point. Just so you had that in the back, uh-
Yep, I appreciate it, and we'll address it.
Yeah.
So most of our other comments were just, um, items that, you know, will be provided as we, uh, move through the process. Uh, Bill knows you gotta do a, a SWIP, and there's comments in here about some additional, uh, details on, um, you know, the road. We'll work together with, uh, Bill and the highway superintendent on, you know, the culvert. Uh, some areas are gonna need some guide, guide railing, uh, you know, lighting. Fire department's gotta look at the plan, but again, these are all, these are all things that are gonna go come, you know, later on, so. Uh, we'll work together and, uh, that's about it for now.
Would manufacturing be allowed on that site if somebody wanted to rent, to manufacture?
If it's an approved use, it's approved in, in this zone.
Yeah. Autobody repair?
Yes, we have one on Airport Drive.
He's got a store outside that one part.
But, but autobody would require a special use permit, so that particular business would have to come back anyway for this special use.
And I could tell you for sure that, um, the applicant would want an autobody place. You know, this wouldn't be designed for that.
He doesn't want them.
Uh, yeah. Cause that would also require, you know, additional parking, um, which would take away from the contractors.
Yep.
Would it be good to note the types that it could be limited to? Types of commercial establishments? Because now that we're talking about earlier the garbage and the recyclables, there's certain things that don't go in either one of those, depending upon the business, which is really a problem.
You're talking about hazardous switches?
Yeah, I'm talking about solar panels, I'm talking about a whole array of things. We, we have to, we have to kinda narrow this down, like big time.
What we'll do is, um, in my next submission, I'll propose, um, the specific uses, um, for this board's review.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that'd be reasonable.
That would be a good starting point.
Yeah, I, yeah, whatever the applicant has that might have for what he's looking, the markets that he's reaching out to-
Yep.
To occupy it, would be appreciative. Did the planner have a, do you have any comments you wanna hit on that-
I'll just go through, and I think that we've, uh, the board has raised a few of the issues. Um, a lot of our questions are sort of hinting at what Pete was talking about in terms of sort of the ongoing changes of use and, and what that might mean for the management of the site, but, um, let's see, let's just go through. So we already talked about outdoor storage of materials, right? You're only talking about, uh, outdoor storage of associated commercial vehicles, right? There's no, okay. We're curious about, uh, flammable and hazardous materials, how those would be stored, or whether or not they'd be permitted on site, but I think that that lends itself more to, uh, what Pete was talking about earlier and ongoing changes of various uses as they come in. To a similar note, the, the types of vehicles and the types of machinery, and what type of, uh, maintenance that would be seeing. Uh, particularly what we're looking at is, um, you know, potential fluid spills that could pose a problem for neighboring wetlands and, uh, the stream. On the subject of subdivision, um, this is, mm, you know, more detail oriented than most of our comments, but the future disposition of the existing Airport Drive. But just a note on the plans, we're assuming that you're just gonna smooth that out, right? That's not proposed to remain.
Uh, no, that would be proposed to be removed.
Yeah, okay.
And seeded, I, yeah.
We're curious about conceptual site plans for Lot Two. Uh, I realize that you're not proposing anything for Lot Two at the moment, we just wanna make sure that that lot is still viable.
Um, and I can most certainly do that. The lot is gonna be, the lot is ninety-two acres and it has twenty-something acres of buildable land. With this road, there'll be four hundred feet of frontage, so, um, you know, it's something I, I guess would ask if it's necessary that we, that we do that, we can.
Typically, when they come in, in pairs, uh, subdivision, we wanna make sure. I don't think that there would be a problem, I think that any concerns would be assuaged with, you know, Lot Two and its building envelope. Right, that would just clarify that, showing, uh, what wetlands and floodplain are on Lot Two.
Yep.
Demonstrating that, you know, you've got the frontage that you're talking about, and what the building envelope would look like on Lot Two, cause as you're saying, it's, it's huge, you've got the frontage. I don't think we would need anything as detailed as what you're showing for Lot One, only that it's a viable lot. Comment number C under two is a, a note for this board, only that any resolution that would follow from, uh, what we're looking at should bear a note in it, a, a condition in it that it is not applying, uh, to Lot Two. That any discussions for the site plan for Lot One would not apply to Lot Two. We discussed the buffer, um, I cite the section of the code that is, uh, at play here, but I think that you have an abundant buffer along the full length of that, so that shouldn't be an issue. As far as internal circulation goes, um, we're curious, I guess, about the max size of the proposed vehicles. You're talking about, and you mentioned earlier that you're not proposing semis to be accommodated on the site, but that they could be.
What we'll do is, uh, I believe Pete had the same comment. We'll provide turning radius, uh, template throughout the site to show all the movements, uh, that the trucks can move around. And what we'll also do is work with the fire department to see what the max fire truck is, which is probably a WB forty. And then we would show that as well, so, um, again, in our next submission, that's something that we'll address.
Okay.
Perfect. We're curious whether or not there are any loading areas. Uh, from your description of the use of the site, that doesn't sound like it necessarily, and with the exception of, I guess, vans pulling up to those garages.
Right, with this, with this particular plan, there's actually quite a number of loading areas in front of each of the overhead doors. Um, I didn't label that on the plan, um, if I need to, I can. But each one of these buildings has an overhead door with, you know, an open access, uh, for a truck or vehicle to pull up to the door. Essentially a driveway for each building, uh, so that would be the loading, unloading areas.
How far is the setback from that door to the drive aisle?
Um, I believe it's twenty-five feet minimum.
Okay, can you just put a call out on the plans indicating that, you know, these boxes are loading areas and they've got this width to accommodate anyone parked there? Perfect. We noticed this too, uh, the plan that you pulled up earlier, this cul-de-sacs looked the same, but on the site plans that I received, it looked like the existing and the proposed cul-de-sacs were two different sizes. That may have just been a clerical issue, but-
I don't know why the cul-de-sac is the size it is, the way it exists. Again, the intention was to use, um, the cul-de-sac that's required for the town.
By the current, by the current.
Right, but again, this is something we can work together on, we can get whatever size.
Yeah, again, I think we discussed it earlier, let's get the highway superintendent's input on it, because eventually this will, you know, become his, so.
Right. You know, with this, with this particular plan in the road, it is a vacant parcel, so we have flexibility to, to make it the way he would want it.
Perfect. Uh, and lastly, for environmental, um, you should add the, uh, a di, a note to the plans detailing the long-eared bat restrictions. A note to the plan, uh, for boulders being placed along, uh, the hundred-foot buffer line. And there's a, a citation in there to the section of the town code that that applies to. Comment C is just referencing the, the permits that you identified, and, and you'll also have to get town permits for those as well. As for Seeker, uh, it's type one action. And at this point, if, uh, the, the planning board would indicate that they would like to serve as lead agency, and we'll prepare that lead agency notice.
Okay, so just, at this point, I guess we just need a motion to have the secretary circulate.
Before I forget.
Planning Board's Lead Agency.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Okay.
What are the boulders for?
The boulders are to, to show where that hundred-foot buffer actually is. Barbara, you would know better about when this got instituted, but-
So we do this on residential property for sure, but a lot of times, different people keep coming in and out, and before you know it, they've encroached into the buffer. And a boulder every forty feet, and they're building, so they have tons of boulders. At this point, any inspector can go out and we can see the demarcation of where the buffer is. So if we start seeing vehicles parked in there, or, I don't know, storage, we know.
You're talking about the bolt, the buffer along the rail trail?
No, the, the buffer, the hundred-foot buffer of the wetland.
To delineate the wetland buffer.
And the floodplain, yeah.
Yeah, my only concern with that is how long it is, so it's a lot of boulders. And number two, with this particular site plan, there's an embankment. So it's not like residential where somebody would be able to drive a car in there. If anybody filled, um, I can't imagine the amount of fill that would be needed off the side of this driveway to encroach in the buffer. And I believe one of the comments actually from Pete was a guide rail, uh, given the slope, so there would even be a guide rail.
Is there rock out here, Bill?
Uh, no rock.
No rock?
So maybe that could be way-
There's no rock on the site, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Because of the demography.
Yeah.
So you're gonna put a guardrail possibly along the road?
Some areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be better than boulder.
Again, there's no rock on this.
It'll delineate, uh, it, yeah, it would delineate that, that edge of the, the property, which is pretty close to being in line with the buffer. It's probably a little larger than the buffer, but if they wanted to remove the guardrail, they'd probably have to come back here anyway, if they were gonna try to develop it. So I mean, if there's some physical barrier there, I think, I mean, that makes sense.
Well, I think if you're replacing the boulders with a guardrail, and the guardrail is-
Right.
Even more generous than the boulders would be, I think it-
But we could, if the guiderail goes in, then we could put that down as a, um, you know, technically make a note on the plan that, you know, there'd be no development beyond this-
Noticeance.
You know, beyond the rail, you know, due to the wetland buffer. Yeah, and then that would be at least part of the record for the site plan. If it ever went forward and there was any, ever any issue, they, whoever pulls out the site plan is gonna see that, that there should be no development on the other side of the rail, and that would take care of it. So, and that would alleviate them in case they can't find, you know, boulders on site, they don't have to truck them in, but they're already gonna pay to put a rail in anyways, so.
The code allows for alternative methods of delineation of that line, so there's-
It does, okay, so it states it in there?
Yeah. Also some other delineation.
This is something we more see on residential property. So the topography here lends itself to the guardrail.
Perfect. Um, before I, before we move on, before I forget, um, the Dutchess County, uh, response letter indicated that it was incomplete application. We'll have to resubmit to them. I believe their issue is the, what we had discussed in the pre-meeting, which is, um, the length of the cul-de-sac, and that it would not just extend the cul-de-sac, but it would extend the cul-de-sac through, um, I guess, what would best be described as a bottleneck of increased risk, right? That, that bridge being, um, more susceptible to some kind of obstruction or blockage than other ele, other parts of that road. Identify the issue with sole source of ingress and egress.
We don't know that they designed it though.
How do you mean?
What size is the bridge and the opening, and what kind of obstructions could block that?
I think it has more to do with sole ingress and egress than it does how you might design the bridge.
Well, the, the bridge is gonna be designed to meet all the appropriate standards, past the hundred-year storm, there's gonna be, you know, additional freeboard above that. Um, I could tell you from the design that we have in place now, I believe it's twenty feet wide, and like eight or nine feet tall. So it's large enough where if it did have a tree or something, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna block the opening.
It's also worth noting that the planning board has considerable latitude regarding that specific subdivision regulation. So should you choose to waive that, I don't think it should be an issue.
I mean, I mean, as long as it's, I mean, obviously it's gotta be, you know, sized properly.
Yeah.
You know, which is gonna be reviewed. Obviously, I believe the, you know, the DEC is probably also gonna weigh in on it also.
Yeah, they will.
Because it's part of the crossing.
Along the road.
Um, they'll have, I, I imagine you're gonna have to go through a process with them too, where there's gonna be a, they're gonna have additional requirements that they're gonna be looking at. The capacity of the bridge.
Just to put it in perspective, and I'm trying to remember back ten years ago when we did this.
Yeah.
But what I believe, when we ran all, you know, we were conservative when we designed the culvert, you know, with the flow. And I think I recall, you know, and this will be verified when we designed it, that this culvert that we're designing is fifty percent larger than the culvert going into three seventy-six, which is further downstream, which is passing more water.
Yeah.
So that's, that's to put it in perspective, and I don't ever remember that culvert being overflowing. I, I know it's been closed on three seventy-six, but I don't believe it ever went over.
But never overflowed, alright. Okay.
So that's just something to put in perspective.
The Dutchess County letter also, uh, suggested the idea of porous pavers, which only caught my eye because there's additional parking, uh, than is required, which you talked about earlier. Um, I don't know if that would be of any interest to you or applicant, but-
Um, in this particular case, no, because that's where we're proposing the septic system.
Sure.
So I wouldn't wanna have any surface water infiltrating-
Yeah.
Where the septic is.
Well, and the other thing, you know, with porous, uh, porous pavement, I think that's more applicable to, uh, residential uh, type use where you're gonna have mostly, uh, well, not, uh, resident, but we're gonna have a use that's gonna have most, mostly car traffic. Because I think when you get your like wheel on it, you can like turn, and I think it makes like ruts.
Yeah, you end up breaking apart the pavement.
And it's a breaking it up here, you got heavy, you know, traffic that probably gonna, you know, heavier traffic, so. But it's, yeah, it's a good comment.
And again, all the, the stormwater here would be designed with curving. You know, we're proposing the country curving to pick up all the drainage, so that we can divert everything to the stormwater basins. Uh, so all the water that, the runoff from this facility will be treated. And that's gonna be part of the split, uh, plan that we prepare.
Okay. Alright, um, any board members have any specific questions at this time?
Yeah.
What is the closest to the rail trail at the pavement come? Distance wise?
Uh, this corner, just by eye to the propping line itself is about forty, forty-five feet. And then you have another twenty to twenty-five feet to the actual pavement, so you're looking at sixty-five, seventy feet, um, to the actual trail itself.
And of that, the twenty-five is, you said earlier untouched, right? Pretty much, that green part?
So when you're looking at it, we have a dimension from here to here, which is twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
Which is in this dark green area, which is proposed to get you undisturbed.
That's thick wooden?
Right. So if you look at that dis, so, from this edge here, it's about thirty feet, so if you bring that over, this is pretty similar, it's thirty feet, so it's, it's probably almost fifty feet from the corner of this black top to where the propping line is.
Okay.
The propping line in, there's still trees, um-
But they got about ten feet of wooded area there, looks like?
But they got about ten feet of wooded area there, looks like.
Inside the right way, I would say, at least ten feet.
You know, I, I, I would think it would be helpful if we had, um, Bill draw maybe a cross-section or two from, you know, the rail trail going up through to the building. That might be more, that might be helpful to give everybody a, a perspective on, you know, what the differences are. You can do that.
Because that slopes from the rail trail to that parking lot, correct?
Yeah.
That slopes down to the parking lot.
On the right side, right?
Yeah, from about this point to the south, rail trail, it comes up, it's a high berm, and then it rolls and comes back down. When you get to about this location here, uh, the elevations are pretty, pretty flat from there to the paving area. So, that would occur.
So, maybe like one, maybe have one cross-section through, through there, and then maybe one through, like, the berm area, just so you can see the difference.
Yeah, just on that northern end, I think would be helpful, just to give everybody perspective between the rail trail and the parking lot.
Yeah.
I agree with the.
And I can add the tree line to the trail, where the.
Yes, approximately, yeah.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, we did discuss, we did touch on the lighting, correct? We had the, uh, provide a, a photometric drawing at some point of proposed lighting.
Yeah.
Okay, um, alright, anybody else? That was it, right? Um, we did start to make a motion to circulate for lead agency, so I know there was a motion.
Second.
Huh?
We started in second.
Yeah, we started in second and never voted on it. So, who in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, okay. What?
No, you need thirty days, so from the time Val gets.
Well, you got a lot of homework.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have, I have a lot of work to do now, uh, I feel comfortable moving forward.
Yeah.
Um, so, it's gonna take me a little bit of time, so, uh, you know, probably won't need to submit for thirty days. Um, but would we still come on just to, to be declared lead agency? Would that be still on the agenda?
Well, I mean, huh?
We can, we can do that the next time, the next time it comes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, should we get still?
We can do that, we can do that the next time that you come.
Right, the, the next time you come, okay.
Just as long as it's after the thirty days.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna shoot it for the, uh, I'll give me four or five weeks.
Yeah, I mean, we should get together and.
Yeah.
Have a meeting, you know, with Mike and all that stuff, and just, you know, talk about some things before you get rolling along.
For sure.
Okay, Sophia, I guess you have, you know, pretty much everybody's comments, and, uh, generally know where we're, you know, what we're looking for, so if we could get those back, um, for the next meeting, um, whenever you make that submission, we'll, we'll go from there.
That's good.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Alright, so with that being the last item on the agenda for the evening, is there any other items we need to discuss this evening?
Can I bring something up quick, Bruce? Um, you know, we were talking about, you know, emergency access here and all that stuff, and I was thinking that, um, you know, Hudson Valley, uh, lighting is in, is, you know, into, into us, and their property has access out to Maloney Road. Do we wanna look at that next time, next time it comes in, and see if there's a possibility of, like, an easement or something that, uh, they might be willing, like, to grant for some kind of emergency access? I don't know if, I don't know if it makes.
I remember they were talking about setting up construction.
Well, they were gonna talk about a construction access, but then I guess that they, uh, you know, nixed that.
Yeah, I think it was gonna raise issues with the county or something.
You know, issues with, uh, like, Maloney Road, it's just something like to think about, you know? I mean, if we were concerned with having a second access point for anybody on Airport Drive for some, like, reason, I mean.
We could do that, um, they could, I could bring it up at the, um, the next, uh, Town Fire Prevention Bureau meeting. Um, you know, they have representatives for the, the three town fire districts, um, I usually go to those meetings, so I could turn around and bring that up to them.
Yeah, it might, it might be, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what could happen on Airport Drive, but I mean, maybe there's a chemical, like, spill, or a truck, or some, you know, I don't know.
Right, very.
You know, while we have, while we, while we have Hudson Valley lighting in front of us, it's probably good to at least think about it, you know, so.
You know, it does, it does make sense, yeah, I forgot that that was taken out on the construction, because originally, when that was put.
Yeah, maybe now we want them to put it back.
Yeah, because it re.
What town does that port, is that LaGrange?
Well, LaGrange, yeah, and there was.
They, they, they didn't want them to access that?
No, it was just, I don't think.
Construction vehicles on the road.
I don't think it ev, I don't think it ever got that far, because I think that the applicants realized that having heavy construction, like, vehicles going along, you know, like, Maloney Road, and, you know, you know what, you know, like, Maloney Road is like in certain parts, you know, it's tough. And I think that they, like, realized that that could create some liability issues, so they just decided they weren't gonna, you know, propose that anymore, but. So, I mean, Bruce, if you're gonna go to that meeting, you know, maybe that's just something to bring up, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, no, I'll bring it, I'll bring it up to their attention, um, that way, maybe it can be addressed, I mean, maybe to see if they feel there's a need for it. Um, yeah, because Hudson Valley Lighting, there's, we're still, we're still, still limbo with that.
I mean, we'd have to get, there'd have to be an easement through their, um, parking area that would only be used in, in, like, an emergency that other people on Airport Drive, if they had to get out, and they couldn't, they'd have some way out, but then, you know, what happens between Hudson Valley Lighting parking lot and, um, uh, Maloney Road, you know, so.
Those all land-based parking, right?
I mean, you know, it's, you know, it's complicated, but we should at least go look at it.
Yeah, well, I'll bring it up at the next meeting and see what the comments come back with, um, if they have some stuff that, if they do have some valid concerns, um, you know, maybe we could discuss it, bring it up with the Hudson Valley Lighting, uh, site plan, and go forward from there.
Yeah, okay.
But it, it would address, right, it would address not having a second access, you know, on the road itself.
Yeah, just, just, uh, you know, a thought.
Okay. Alright, anything else for you, you to discuss? Alright, if there's nothing else, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it second.
Motion paid and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, no, motion carries.